All right, we'll get started. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Gilbert City Council Meeting. Today's date is November 12th of 2024 at 6:00 P. M. Roll call. Interim Clerk Mike Skurbek, Councillor Potenon, myself, Mayor Smith, Councillor Polis, Councillor Skinsich, City Attorney Brian Lindsay, and Public Works Director Sam Lotterger are present. We do have a quorum. And if everybody would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I believe we have one addition this evening.
Clarification and dates. Payments and bills is 10/19 through 11/8. It's in a packet and we have each copy. And we are going to try to add Resolution 2024-25 to any other miscellaneous announcements just so it fits there. And it's an acceptance of a donation from the Fire Relief Association.
Is that something I'm gonna have to read because it wasn't part of the resolution?
You're sure don't make a long answer. I thought they could certainly have been. I would say you're not required to make it as long as we make it a copy through mail.
Perfect. Motion by Councillor Polis.
I'll second.
Supported by Councillor Skinsich to approve the additions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Polis, say nay. Non-motion carries, four to zero. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. City Council meeting minutes. Invoices, previously approved projects, boards and commission minutes, payments of bills and payroll upon proper audit of clerk and mayor. Moved by Councillor Polis. Supported by Councillor Potenon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Polis, say nay. Non-motion carries, four to zero. And do we have any public input tonight?
Good evening, Paul Skurbek. I actually have a couple items that I want to address. I'm gonna do the easiest one first, which is myself and Dylan Horn from West Forty RV Park and from Horn's Seasonal Lighting are going to be taking on the responsibility for what was last year's lighting contest in the city. And so we're just about ready to announce it. Anybody with a Gilbert City address will be eligible for it and hopefully it'll create some holiday cheer and some goodwill. It was very popular last year. We'll take care of the judging and the prizes and all that kind of stuff. So with that, we do have a request. It's twofold request. One, if the city would allow us to post our signs up on the bulletin boards in the community center and stuff like that, that would help us to get the word out. Well, obviously we'll communicate it through social media and things like that. But the second one is, and I can't remember if we asked this last year when a number of us tried to organize this. But so we are putting up prize money for first, second, and third prizes. But we were asking for the city's cooperation to see if you would consider giving a $50 utility credit for each of those prize winners. And that's the main ask that I'm asking for tonight.
Does that equate to three prize winners?
Three prize winners, first, second, and third, $50 each.
I don't recall doing that last year.
No, we didn't do it last year.
The city wasn't getting involved.
Yeah, the city wasn't.
And last year, the city did provide some help in getting it out there and organizing and stuff. So this year, there was no call on city staff for any assistance or anything like that. We're taking it completely private, out of city hands. So that's why we're asking if the city would participate.
You know, this is that donation thing again, which I know cities aren't supposed to donate to anything as far as I know. Brian has mentioned this several times.
I don't mind putting signs up, but as far as getting involved in it, we stayed out of it last year. People donated stuff on their own, but I don't.
This is again something where we've talked in the past about having that gambling license where then we could help y'all with a donation. But I think without that, it falls under that, in my opinion.
That's what I feel too.
Brian, you got any?
Mayor, if the council wishes, I can take a look at this. It walks a fine line because generally speaking, council would have the ability to make adjustments to a utility bill. Let's say if a customer came in and said, hey, I had, you know, just as an example, a water leak that was beyond my control and my water bill was five times the size of what it normally is. The city, and council specifically, generally has some authority there to make adjustments when they're deemed equitable. In this case, that the adjustment that's up looks a lot more like a donation. So if the council liked it, could take a look and deliver an opinion back as to whether it be permissible, whether it would be. The reason we're not allowed to make donations in a lot of circumstances is because of the restrictions related to public expenditure, public funds. And the question is, while this is an adjustment of a utility bill, is it more akin to a public expenditure than it is an adjustment? I could look at that issue with counsel.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think just ask for donations over, not the city donating. That's just my view on it. Keep it separate. Like the Fourth of July Committee is separate, you know. It should be also separate, in my view.
Yeah, they get donations from other people. I have no problem with the sign posting, but.
No, that's.
Another part. I'll move on allowing posters, signs.
Yeah, advertise for it, yeah. And what we do want to advertise?
We'll have posters that we'll send, that we'll send to Mike or drop off here. And maybe if there's a post that could be done on the Facebook page, that'd be helpful as well.
Bulletin boards on the reader board too, or something like that?
Yeah. Whatever you think you would be able to do, that would be helpful just to kind of get the word out.
I'll second. I guess through the motion alter.
Moving by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Skinsich to approve the posting of the Christmas light decorating contest. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Polis, say nay. Non-motion carries, four to zero.
Thank you. And that falls, in my mind, falls under the, you know, it never hurts to ask the question. Got the answer. So the second one actually came up today and was kind of the, and I immediately brought it to Mike's attention. But I wanted to also bring it to council's attention. As I'm sure you're aware, there are several people who have gotten letters from the Department of Health about water connectivity, whether it's an unknown or whether it's lead pipe. And I got a call today from a resident on Minnesota Avenue asking me about it. I, like I said, I immediately went to Mike and made sure that that individual was connected with City Hall. My request is that we somehow have, it references in this letter several times the City of Gilbert and gives the city phone number even though it's not technically put out by us. There seems to be some confusion in the city, particularly today. I don't know if there's a way that we can maybe help tell people to read the letter. There's instructions on the letter for what you can do. But the individual that contacted me was very panicked as to whether or not they needed to go out and buy bottled water and not drink their water. And I've, you know, they've been in contact, like I said, with Mike. And I just think that there's some confusion. I think we could reinforce that, hey, please, some people may be getting this letter, please read through it. There are links to state websites for what you can do. Because I think that would maybe tamp down the confusion a little bit.
And that was sent out by who?
That was sent out by us.
That letter was.
A little bit here. That has to do with our lead and copper stuff that we've had to go do over the last year. Department of Health, well, we were, it started off with our, we put it in our perma leaves. We wanted to inspect people's houses for if they have lead, copper, galvanized, so came into the house. So we did that. A lot of them, I think we got about 50% of the feedback. So a lot of them, we put in unknown. So anybody that had an unknown, that's the letter, we had to hand out. We've been working with John Jan, JBJ Engineering on this. He's the one who kind of compiled the list and helped us get it into Department of Health. One thing is, this kind of all happened really fast. On our end too, I just met with John, who gave us this stuff and said, well, Department of Health says it has to be out by the 15th of November. And we hadn't really even had time to go through it correctly and whatnot. So we didn't put it out just so we could get it out there by the 15th. I can't remember what John said if we didn't get it out by the 15th. There's certain criteria we have to do to get it out. And now we, once we got it all, now we have to nail something in this list of stuff we did to Department of Health and making sure that we've got it on file. I didn't even read through the letter, but yeah, it's, I'm sure everybody's panicked.
It wasn't the most clear.
Yeah.
I did a 30-second look at it, it was really confusing.
Right at the end of the day, Department of Health is going to assume that you have lead unless you prove it otherwise. So they send the letter to, everybody's got to get the letter. It's part of the protocol. You guys were working on this a couple of years ago. You haven't gotten completely through it. There's a timeline that needs to be met, and that's what's going on here. It doesn't mean it's, you know, hit a critical mass and you gotta worry about it. But it does ask that we take a look and see what's going on. You got copper coming in, we'll say, oh, clean bill of health. You know, if it's something different, we may have to do a water test to see where you're at. But they err on the side of caution. Caution in being alarming in the way the letter's written, and that's what they want. So, you know, but everybody who's called in has got a good understanding. And Sam's got a list of people he's got to check on right away.
That's the next step, is we're compiling a list at City Hall. So if anybody got the letter and wants to come check, we have a list going at City Hall. And we don't even know, you know, when it first came out, there was 100%, it's 100% grant money for the copper line change, the line change out from the shut-off to the home. But the city's got to do the physical agent. We're not even that close yet. We don't even have a draft. I know if we meet with John and Mike here within the next couple of weeks to roll over our next steps on building projects, water projects in the next couple of years, that's when we would implement some of this grant money and we could start looking at this all. But nothing has to be changed out immediately as far as I know.
And there's no warnings indicated to us that anybody's in jeopardy so they can go about business, just.
I think there was only two people in town that had lead, so water line. But I'm kind of suspect, I'm one of the many of them. But I'd like to read and inspect those just to make sure. I haven't seen them in town.
Ultimately, there is a grant program to work on this. All older cities in the state of Minnesota and across the country have, a lot of them have lead service lines or part of the service lines lead. Galvanized can have some lead in it. So it's a testing and a change-out program that's designed to fix this across the U.S. Fortunately, I don't think you have a lot of them in Gilbert, but you could have some. So that's why we have to go through the process.
So should we do a follow-up letter with it explaining that? Or just you'll handle the calls as they come?
We'll handle the calls as we progress.
Okay.
And always we talk some areas of the.
Perfect.
Once we find out better information, we can mail it out.
Let everybody know. Perfect.
For the, I actually did receive one of these at my campground, which was kind of amusing to me because we put in our stuff in 2003 and 2004 is when we started doing our stuff. And we received not one, but two IRRV grants to put it in. We've had multiple inspections from the Department of Labor and Industry. We've had multiple health department inspections. And it still came back that the information was unknown for us when it's very clearly known for the last 20 years. So.
Now hopefully the bookkeeping and records that we get from this and obtain will be up to date and kept track of.
So, and then finally, this is actually an agenda item. This is related to the Lannick poll that is under New Business. I have a question and, well, actually I have two questions. One, I'm alarmed to see how much a poll costs, but I guess I'm gonna get a lot of that coming up. So, but my first question is either to tie or this, Ernie, I understand that this poll was destroyed as part of a traffic accident. And so I would like to know if the city is actually going after the individual and their insurance for the destruction of city property? We currently have charges.
Insurance, we won't insure, so insurance is public.
So this is money that technically the city is going to get back?
We will get reimbursed, yeah.
And then the second is more, I understand that Lannick put the polls in to begin with, which I understand that's probably the logical reason why we would get a bid from them. But I didn't see a second bid in there and was wondering if we will be following a process for one bid for an item that's that large?
The item is not very large. It's not necessary to have more than one bid, but we could do that. I don't know of anyone else who would do it besides Lannick. And Lannick had done it in the past. That's how they got the call because we needed something right away for the police. And then we can't, we have to order a poll and make a decision who to go with. So if there's another firm that wants to bid it, we could hold off. But, you know, it is going to be covered on their insurance. And I don't know of any, Sam, anybody else who could get.
Generally, the victim, the victim already crashed. You have the choice of your own body shop generally. And because we're the victim, we have the right to choose who we want to do the work. If for some reason the insurance company challenges the price of it, then they have to come up with something that we agree with. But I think that would be something that we would litigate. I don't know, Brian, if you could add to that.
Yeah, I think, thinking back of what Skurbek is coming for, at that, at that price point, at that level, we're still under the $25,000 threshold. So getting two bids is the best project. But if you're in an emergency circumstance and you've got an insurance, independent insurance company who will be taking the bill, we're fairly safe without a second bid.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Thank you, Paul. Any other public input? And we'll move on to the reports from mayor and council. I have a few. The city charter that Charter Board worked on did pass. It was voted to be approved. So there's a copy of that posted on the internet to be viewed. The city staff is working on putting it in a book for it to be available at City Hall. A copy can be made, but they're working on putting it together yet. So that did pass. And thank you for the Charter Board for the work you did and Attorney Lindsay for the work you put into it. Mike and I met with IRRV today. We were allotted the $1 million from a state bond. However, IRRV is releasing the money. So we had to go and present to them our project for the community center. And I'll just go briefly on what I did. It took, I think, a minute and a half there. So basically, it's to update the heating system of the community center, looking at fixing up the back parking lot, updating the kitchen, adding the ADA bathroom downstairs. And then whatever's left, which of a million dollars with those projects, there's not going to be much. So. But that money, like I said, is a lot allocated to us. It's now the city's got to get the process rolling so we can get that project moving to get it completed.
Just to note, it's kind of a rare funding opportunity because there's no match. So all the money will come from the state. City doesn't have to put any 50% or 25% in. So it's a nice deal.
Yeah, when we did apply for it, there was a matching. So we asked $2 million. So the project was $2 million. We were asking for $1 million to match. They came back later this, earlier this summer and said that it's going to be 100% grant. So that was nice. So thank you to our legislators that got this passed for us. And then I want to thank the Mike and the election judges for this year's election, for the work they put in. My understanding, I've never partook in it and I just, with what I observed, it's a process. It's a lot of work. So thank you guys for having that, getting that completed for the city. And last note is calendar parking is in effect. I believe warnings are still being issued. Okay, warnings are done. Please park on the right side for snow removal. Get into the habit of it now. I know we don't have it, but. And if you also could shovel fire hydrants, make sure they're clearing your neighborhood for the fire department to have easy access so they don't have to go out and shovel them out. I know two years ago I was clearing fire hydrants. So please clear the fire hydrants. And that's all I've got. Councillor Potenon.
We don't have anything.
Thank you. Councillor Polis.
I'll just touch on the thank you for all the people that were involved in the election. I know it's a huge process. And, you know, when I was here voting, I did thank them in person. But it means a lot for them to take their time out of the day to do that all day long. And it's a tiring day, I'm sure. So thank you again.
Thank you. Councillor Skinsich.
I've got a couple of things I was just gonna mention. The lights at the end of town must be out because of that pole. I take it? All right. Dakota and Summit also. That is really, really dark there. That light's been on for a couple of weeks or whatever. Other than that, that's about it. Thanks, Paul and Dylan. Is it both of you guys are doing that lighting thing? That's awesome. That'd be nice to see you again this year. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll extend that note on these light poles. I know I've got a few out in my neck of the woods too. So if you do see a light out at night, get that little silver tag number and report it to City Hall. And then we'll make a list and we'll contact people that'll fix them. So if you see a light out and you have the time, just get that little tag number and we'll make a list of it to get them replaced. I know I've seen a few and I'm gonna get them tonight to turn them in, so.
Take number or location and then give it to Hannah is the best.
Perfect.
I mean, it's cost efficient to do them all at the same time.
Yes.
And that's what usually they do is they get two or three or five of them and then. So then Minnesota Power isn't coming here once a week fixing one night. Well, they come and fix, you know, six, eight of them.
Yep. And we'll move on to reports from staff, boards and commissions.
Good evening. Don't have much tonight. Under miscellaneous, that resolution of a donation from the Gilbert Fire Department Relief Association is going to be for $8,000. And once you, once you accept the donation, we'd like to purchase a new dryer for our turnout gear. It's a double door dryer. Just due to more calls, we're getting caught with wet. Some people's gear still wet when we're on a second call or they're out. They don't have gear to put on. So I did get a quote for a dryer, which is $8,870.07 from McQueen Equipment. So the $870.07 would come out of our budget, which we have money in there due to the unsuccessful bid of the FEMA grant and the DNR grant this year. So I do have extra from there. And on top of that, we're gonna have to do some electrical work and some plumbing work as we're relocating into the back room, our laundry area there. And Sammy's working on that with who he uses for electrical and plumbing. So I don't know a price on that, but I'm guessing that's gonna be probably $2,000, $3,000. So out of our budget will be somewhere less than $4,000, I would imagine, which I budgeted $6,500 for a FEMA grant and $2,500 for the DNR grant, which we didn't use. Looking for approval on that. And this will be the last request this year, I promise you.
I'll move.
I'll support.
Moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Skinsich to approve the purchase. I just had it. Of turnout gear dryer in the amount of $8,870.07.
Plus whatever the electrical plumbing is gonna cost.
Plus, yeah, election or electrical costs and miscellaneous costs to install. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Polis, say nay. Non-motion carries, four to zero.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates. This is probably the last time I'm gonna be up here this year since I'm not looking for anything else. So I want to thank Mayor Smith, Councillor Skinsich, Councillor Heisman for all they've done for the city as they're gonna be exiting here in January. Thanks for your years of service. Look forward to working with Paul and, I believe, Dylan and Carl again. Is it Dylan? And Carl again. So congrats. Thank you for your work. We do have, we did have one. We do have, we did have one retirement off the fire department this last week. Counselor Heisman retired after 20 years and eight months on the department, so we thank him for his service. And we're currently running at 21 members with 19 of them fully trained. The other two are starting their training, I believe, next week. So that'll be exciting to have everyone trained up. And lastly, I want to reiterate on what Mayor Smith said about the fire hydrants. Your help would be appreciative. At two minutes of shoveling, a hydrant could be the difference between life or death. You know, we're getting up there with a rig, and if we have to shovel, that's taken away from getting in getting in on a search and rescue and, you know, possibly saving someone's life. So please, if you live by a hydrant, do what you can to keep it shoveled out through the winter. Hopefully, it'll be a winter like last year, but we can't be that lucky, so... All right, thank you all. You have anything else for me?
One can hope.
Are you looking, are you guys taking any applications for new members?
Always.
Going back in?
Every department is always yes, so why are you looking at getting back on?
That's all.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good year, Mark. Thanks.
And City Attorney Brian Lindsey. Thank you. Chief Teacher.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Couple things. The first thing is, we spent last week removing a bolt from the Orbegon. It was sunk in basically about 10 feet of water. It was a 19-foot bayliner. Unfortunately, once the city becomes... Once the city becomes aware that a, a poor event on number of ways within our jurisdiction, we, the city, have an obligation to have that bolt removed within three days. We removed the bolts. We pulled out the side of the bank from the tower shell. And we're tracking back the owner. We're still doing some investigation here on who the actual owner is. Unfortunately, we won't be registered owner. We're able to track back if the vehicle's been sold. You know, the title transfer is just a build sale. It's a build sale. We can't prove who actually had the bolt. So we're still working on trying to find out. We're working a couple avenues as we speak. Second, we removed a camper that was also in about 12 feet of water, 10 feet of water. That was also removed. Again, once we became aware of something, we have to take care of the issue. That was a little camper that was actually full of chicken grass, so... Somebody dumped it here. It's not a deal. So we're also doing some thought on that. We are currently back to our fifth owner since 2016, so... I started from the owner of Grand Rapids, and now we're bringing it way back to this area so we can get some of the fitness by law of township, killer areas. So we're still doing some thought on that. So that was the two big items. And that's the calendar parking. That's all I have, so... I would like to be excused. I do have a agenda item at my law company that I can do right now, so I could be excused. I have that. Unfortunately, I had a commission meeting this evening, I don't know. Due to the holiday yesterday, so I appreciate that. Don't get into questions.
One thing, without, I guess, telling where, was it on the backside? Or where did they dump this stuff off?
I can show you the video. It's pretty impressive, actually. They mentioned for bay liner, we have, it was right across the boat landing, sun船the shore.
Okay.
Intentionally dumped the plug to pull the motor. And we have winched up the top of the point. The camper was in the backside of Orbegon, I guess we call it, boat landing number two.
Okay.
And that, you can tell it was back in... I think they thought that it would float farther. It didn't float far enough, although it got caught. So it was right in the edge there, so... And that, I think, we're still following on, transferring it. It was converted to a pigeon coop, a chicken coop, so...
Wow. That's a first.
Yes, thank you. I have nothing further.
It's unfortunate.
And we'll move on to Public Works Operation Director Sammy.
I do not have nothing but agenda items. I just got something.
Law truck?
Law truck. Wolfen, I think, called this week, but Wolfen, they're actually going to start working on it soon, but talking to the guy that outfits it, he said possibly January or not. There were some, there were some issues with the tires that came on it. And then there was an issue with, I don't know if it was the front end had a $13,000, $13,000 pound gross weight, and was supposed to have a 16. They're supposedly working it.
Jeez.
Waiting for tires. We've been waiting for tires on it for about three weeks now.
This isn't going to be some kind of nightmare of a vehicle, is it?
I hope not.
Might get it in another two years.
It's been, yeah, it's been three years waiting.
The pole lights, the pole wiring, so they got a way, ordered the wiring harness for the...
Just cancel it and get a used one.
As far as, I don't know, it's supposed to be, and I didn't get a call from Chris this week yet. Did call, but James Hinkle, that I was dealing with, only four days ago.
They're the chassis owner, or the...
Yeah. And he said, last week, he said, the appetizers are supposed to be there Thursday, so...
What's his excuse for the wiring and everything else? The axle not ordered correctly?
Well, so the axle, the sticker was wrong, I guess. But they told, what he told me is, you can have $16,000 from an axle, but if you have these certain tires on it, it drops the weight down. We changed out the tires, brought the rating out. And we're just waiting for the wiring. They're supposed to be working on it, so I'm all, I'd say I've been following up here and there, trying to give it a week's time before I call them back to see. Other than excuses, I don't know.
Wow. What year is this? Is this going to be a '23?
I believe so.
It's going to be two years old, two model years old?
It's going, I think it's a chance, a 24 chance.
Okay.
Because it got built this year.
All right.
Delivery wasn't until September. So, um, delivery was like September, fall, nine.
All right.
Wow. And then we'll go to interim clerk, Mike.
I was just going to thank all the election judges and everybody who came out and voted. We had a 90% participation rate, which is off the charts, so thank you, everybody, and that's all I have.
Thank you. And we have nothing for old business. We'll move on to new business. Resolution 2024-24 CDBG grant application.
Clerical thing that we have to have to apply for the CDB grant that we're applying for. Just part of the process, so we need to get it approved.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Wallace.
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Skinsich to approve Resolution 2024-24. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wallace, say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. Atlantic Electric Light Pole Estimate. Is the light pole on the south end of town that was damaged. Replacement cost is $13,200.
It's like a motion to be able to order it because it takes 12 weeks or some crazy thing.
I'll move.
I'll support it.
Moved by Counselor Wallace, supported by Counselor Skinsich to approve the replacement cost of $13,200 for the light pole. Any further discussion?
I have a question on that. Can't they, you say the wires are going to be out for 12 weeks then? Those lights are going to be out?
No.
Or are they going to reconnect the wires?
Once this approves, it's approved, I told them I wanted to temper those other lights on.
Yeah, could they just reconnect the wires there?
I think he's, I think in his book, he's putting wiring on from both ends because the wiring got pulled up quite a bit, brayed out and... Yeah, it's all part of it.
But that'll be done right away?
That'll be done. I'll get them to do that early, and then the pole won't come in.
Right.
Get that up as soon as we get, and then lights, our front lights will be, this is coming to.
Mayor, I got one thing. Was that the pole, the speed limit sign thing was on?
Yeah, yeah.
So did that get destroyed, too?
No, actually, we got it. I know I was talking to Mike today about putting a temporary post there and putting a speed limit sign on the post, and then you do that triangle.
Somebody hit some meridian.
Leave a cement bunker in front of it or something.
Yeah.
Right. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wallace, say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. And the display sales estimate.
This is, this is the lights up at for our Christmas decorations. The C7 bulbs are starting to get obsolete for the blue lights that we usually order. The blue, the blue is what we tend to have in public here. Like our snowflakes, we've got blue on them. And they're like triple coated blue light bulbs. They don't make those anymore. So when we put, when I ordered them, the one time we got just a single coated light bulb, we put them on and all the snowflakes were out. Now, I don't know if council wants to go that way or what, but, I mean, I did get a, I did get a bid to replace all the bulbs, is what you see in front of you from this display sales, where I normally do. I don't know if we want to do that this year, or just do Christmas decorations. I was even looking at online, just on Amazon, and I can get the bulbs for about 70, 70 cents a bulb. I don't know if you'd have to have me go there.
Are they any, is the quality there, though, where they're going to last? Or are they going to go for 20 hours and...
I don't know. That's the thing about ordering on Amazon. I don't know. I would think they're the same bulbs, but I think it's up to council if, if what we want to do. But I know, I know, like I said, I could buy some blue LEDs, but then not, you know, you'll have the old bulbs plus the new LEDs. I don't know if we want to do that. So that's where I, I got a price for, you know, change them all out, and that's what the goal to see from you. If you want to go through with it and change all the light bulbs, or if you want me to try to get another quote, or just go off Amazon, I'm fine doing that. Say, Amazon was about 70 cents a bulb.
What's a light fixture? What does one of them actually cost? Do you know off the top of your head?
About 70 cents.
No, I mean...
No, the display.
The whole display.
The whole display. I wouldn't, no, I would, I would imagine it's pretty expensive, you know. Now ours is starting to get in tough shape, you know, we're starting to, the color is starting to deteriorate, you know. There's rust showing and stuff like that. And there's physically, you know, they're pretty, pretty stale.
So this would get us by for quite a few years, anyway?
I would think so, yeah. I mean, I think those Christmas decorations are pretty old, anyway. Obviously, they're from the mid-'90s.
Maybe it's time to go out for donations. People are pretty generous when it comes to stuff like that. You might be able to buy new and not even deal with the bulbs, you know.
Well, I don't know. I bet.
Well, I wouldn't go that far. I just, you know, if we can get new bulbs or... But the hard part is, is we're going to be putting them up in about three weeks. It's, you know, Thanksgiving weekend is the week we usually put them up. That's where we can get by this year, and we can do something next year, or maybe putting something in the budget for next year. I don't know, but let me say, I want to bring up, you know, and have a thought on the cost anyways. And it's not horribly expensive either.
No. And if it'd be good for, even if we got another five or so years out of it. But in that time, can start replacing.
Start replacing certain fixtures.
Fixtures, yeah.
I would think we can get them 10 years out of those decorations. You know, we might have to change a light bulb here and there. One of the last what happens is, you know, put them up and take them down. It might crack.
Sure. I guess I would be in favor of doing this.
Well, it's important. We can move it.
I'll move.
So it's probably $1,000 less to order them off Amazon.
Right, but do you know what you're getting if that's the only choice?
You might look at it, they could be...
If the manufacturer's the same and it's more cheaper, you gotta look at the manufacturer.
They're from GE or whatever, you know, then it'd be similar.
To me, it's like, wow. I'll support.
Well, so these bulbs, so you're going to take all the bulbs out now and replace them with these?
Yeah.
And it takes that many? We have, how many units are we, do we have?
I think there's about 35.
And each have like 100 bulbs in them, or what?
Yeah, I think there's 60 or 70.
Or they're just these small ones, push-ins?
They're the screw-in, the small screw-in.
Right, yeah. And they're all LED now?
No, they're not. They're the regular.
When you're changing over to LEDs.
They're not, they're discontinuing all LEDs. They're all regular bulbs.
Right, yeah.
So that's why, that's why I'm having to change them all, is...
But you can mismatch them anyway, right? It doesn't matter.
I don't know.
I believe you can, you know.
I, I don't. I mean, if that's the way we want to go, I can just order blue, and I don't know how it's going to look, you know. That's, that's where I just change them all, all of them, let's make a step, and then we'll be good.
Yeah. Plus, I'll be going to LED, so I think they'll be using less electricity.
And they'll be brighter.
Yeah. So I guess I'd make a motion to move forward with.
I support. Would you want to go online and look and see what you can get? If you can get the identical bulb for half the price, that's a no brainer.
If you want to go compare, if it's apples to apples, do it. Otherwise, I would prefer you go with this, just because I think it's going to be a better quality bulb.
I agree with you.
Yes.
We could, the account, the motion could be amended just to up to X, X number of dollars to acquire new light bulbs. And that would provide flexibility to go to the higher prices and get there.
Sorry, I'll amend my motion to say that give Sam the okay to replace the light bulbs up to a cost of $2,819.
I'll support.
Moved by Counselor Skinsich, supported by Counselor Wallace to approve the purchase of light bulbs in the amount up to $2,819. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wallace, say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. And charitable gambling app for the Knights of Columbus. Yeah, we do this every year, and this is for the year of 2025.
I'll move. I'll support.
Moved by Counselor Wallace, supported by Counselor Skinsich to approve the gambling application for the Knights of Columbus. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wallace, say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. And do we have anything miscellaneous tonight?
We need to add Resolution 2024-25 to approve the donation from the Fire Relief Association.
Yeah. Yeah. So moved by Councillor Pulis.
One second.
Supported by Councillor Potenin to accept the donation from the Gilbert Fire Relief Association in the amount of $8,000. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. And the other one was part of the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Okay, now we have, uh, council will convene into a closed session to discuss labor negotiations as per Minnesota statute, state statute 13D.03. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Councillor Pulis.
Support.
Supported by Councillor Skjendzic to, to suspend our regular council meeting and move into the closed session. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. We'll convene over there. Alright, I'm calling our regular council meeting back to order. And as per discussion in our closed meeting for labor negotiations. I need a motion now to approve, correct? And so that's what.
Correct. I think we would entertain, I think the, the council would entertain a motion relative to the IT contract, the, uh, the post trucks.
Yeah, first, correct. So yeah, it's for discussed in a closed session, labor negotiations for IT uh, contract language.
I moved.
Moved by Councillor Pulis.
One second.
Supported by Councillor Potenin. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. And I'll try to repeat this again for the as for this, discussed in our closed meeting for labor negotiations uh, for the clerk position. Uh, pending contract per.
Excuse me, is, is it a clerk title or is it administrator title?
Clerk.
Clerk. It is for a clerkship? Okay.
Yep, clerk title.
Okay.
So motion to accept as per dis, as discussed in our closed session for labor negotiations, the clerk contract.
I'll move.
Yeah, one second.
Moved by Councillor Skjendzic, supported by Councillor Potenin. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. And that's all we, I need to cover. Right? Perfect. Alright, I'll ask one more time, anything miscellaneous that we may have missed? Anything anybody wants to add? Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Move.
Moved by Councillor Pulis.
One second.
Supported by Councillor Potenin to close our city council meeting at 7:21 PM. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None, motion carries four to zero. Thanks, everyone, for coming.